It's around six P M and we will call this meeting over.
Need to please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, please join us in this place. Prepare us for the work to be done and the decisions to be made. Allow us to act in a manner that is for the benefit of the city of Richwood. Please protect our citizens, envelop them with your love. We ask that you help us to remember that you are above all and you give us all we need. Be with those that need comfort and clarity. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Fledgling allegiance to the United States of America. And here to one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the same day as we die, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All council members present. Going on to public comments, we have a public comments. Paige, you're going to come up first, we have three minutes to discuss our public comments and all of yours. Your, why don't you start, time is beginning.
This girl, this one's for you. It's good. Maybe I won't pick on you because you live out of Oakwood Shores. Remember, it's the first time I've been able to get in your health class. But remember last year sometime there were two developers here. We were rolling really bad to build out there but just couldn't. I think we call it the, I'll call it the liability fee or something like that. It was like five thousand plus dollars, maybe we've had to pay for. But I got a solution for you guys, here yours. If I remembered right, the number that stuck in my mind was five thousand dollars. What I calculate here is, I think we have something like a hundred and thirty homes out in that subdivision. So the thing I calculated is, a hundred and thirty members of your HLA. You got, y'all want to improve your neighborhood, you want to bring in developers. I calculated here, all it would take is for your member dues to add ten dollars a month to the member dues. In a year's time, you'd have fifteen thousand dollars. My calculation there is, you got five thousand, you know, average five thousand. You got enough there to offer a new, to pay that fee for them to build those homes. I got the impression those guys were dead set, all ready to build out there. That stopped. Thank you, y'all bring that up, ten dollars a month. And now, thank you. Back to the, first of all, I'm going to point out here, we all know why I'm talking about. Y'all all, everybody, nobody that I have contacted with by phone, intensely anybody that works for the city. With the exception of two people. Home call with one of the council persons, so a home call conversation. And then I had about a ten minute conversation. Basically, I wanted to confirm a couple of things.
Page. All right, Ms. Lecount, I believe you're up next.
All right, my name's Lauren Lecount, I live at two thousand, Ressus Port Boulevard in Richwood. And in the interest of time, I actually have an email that I was going to send out to council. But then, I made my own comment that if you're going to say it in the email, you should probably say it publicly. It's going to be listed in the email so that you can verify. All I've asked for from my council, from my council of elected representatives, is that my city be well-run, transparent, and accountable to the residents who live here. The facts should be presented clearly and in context so that everyone who lives here can have confidence in the processes used to administrate our government. During meetings of multiple boards and city council, unable to tell the truth from lies, and feeling that on some level of my government, there is not reason. It has not just been one instance, and over time, I have noticed a pattern of behavior that brings me deep concern for the direction of our city. I respect all of you. And then I will not hold you accountable, as I expect you to hold others accountable, because that is how our government operates best. While I understand that our city manager exercised his authority when terminating the police chief, I absolutely think that the chief should appeal this decision to the city manager's supervisors. Given an opportunity to defend himself publicly against allegations made publicly against him. I feel that is true of everyone who has allegations made against them that compromise their character, reputation, and integrity, including volunteers and council members. I believe it's crucial to provide for a well-run city. I received an email from a member of this council with allegations, including words like "almost" and "could have," when I requested information regarding this recent termination of personnel. I'm not aware of how much of this was obtained through private conversations, or how many council members were present when these allegations were made, or who they were distributed by. I requested facts on multiple occasions from my elected representation, or made public, or multiple, on multiple public items, and received conflicting information. I also received allegations of constitutional rights viola- Okay, done?
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Preser, stage is yours.
Mayor Council, just wanted to kind of echo similar comments to Ms. Lecount. There's definitely a pattern of behavior, lack of transparency, that gets passed down to you guys. Obviously, from the fire department's perspective as well. A lot of information, like I said, doesn't get to you guys from a transparent matter. We preach transparency in the city, and so, definitely think those things need to be looked at. All those who have been subject to those, to that lack of information, I feel should have the opportunity, as Ms. Lecount stated, to talk to y'all and discuss that. Similar to our Christian, so, it's all asked, is that we follow that and hold ourselves accountable as well.
Anybody wish to have any further comments on this?
I have two. I've got multiple personalities.
Change your name? Thank you guys very much. Next, we're going to move on to a presentation, eight presented by Representative TLO Brown and Hill.
Mayor Council, thank y'all for having me. I'd love to say my name is representative, but I do have a name. I am Clayton Rogers with Fitzwilliam Brown and Hill, one of the CPAs that worked on your annual financial audit this year. So I am here to, you should all have a copy of the city's annual financial report. And a couple of other documents that I'll go over, in the interest of time. As a CPA who helped put this document together, I would love to give you the five minutes per page version of this fifty-page document. But in the interest of time, I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the financials or the audit process. So, just as a refresher, what the audit is, what the audit is not. We were engaged to actually render two audit opinions. One is our opinion over the financial statements themselves, and one is an opinion over federal grant compliance. There's limitations to both of these that I'll go over. The first thing to understand is that we're looking fairly high level, and we're looking at what would be considered a material issue. In other words, what would be something that is big enough that would really affect decision-making at a fundamental level, like yourselves making decisions running the city? Another important user of your financial statements is your bondholders. And on the federal compliance side, really, what would be non-compliance with those grant agreements that would make the federal or state agencies have different opinions about the city's compliance with everything that they had to do with those federal funds? So, at the risk of going ahead and spoiling it, we were able to render unmodified or clean opinions as a result of both of those audits. And I'm happy to report those findings to you here today. I'll go over a couple of things. The first one is you should have this small bound document, this single audit report. If you'll open that with me to page eight. We have three written reports, two of them are at the front of this document. I'm not going to go over those in detail. But what they essentially lay out is that in relation to federal grant requirements, the city is responsible, the city's management is responsible for compliance with all of the applicable regulations that come with those grant funds. And that they're responsible for having internal controls to make sure that that compliance doesn't happen by accident. Our responsibility is to perform an audit and render an opinion. And you can see here on page eight, we call it the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. And you can see here, this lays out a little summary of both of our audit opinions that were unmodified. Halfway down the page, it shows what we tested as what we call a major program. So, what is a major program? And if you will flip one page back to page six. Page six is what we call the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. Yes, I do say that five times fast this time of year. This is a schedule that shows all the federal money that was spent by the city during this fiscal year. And so, what we do in the single audit, we don't look at every program. We don't look at every compliance requirement. In this case, it was that first program, the CDBG funds. Based on certain criteria, we picked that program and performed a deep dive on the compliance with those requirements. And so, that was the program that we looked at and were able to render our conclusion over. Any questions so far? The other, I'm sorry.
Would you mind explaining what the unmodified is?
Great.
So they'll understand.
Yeah, so unmodified, again, it usually gets referred to as a clean opinion. In the context of the federal grant single audit, it means that, we believe based on our audit, that the city did comply with those big important compliance requirements that were related with those funds that we looked at. Getting ahead of myself, but when I cover the financial statements, our unmodified or clean opinion means that, in our opinion, the financial statements that are in front of you are materially accurate in accordance with accounting principles. That doesn't mean perfect, for example, the first thing we do when Tricia gives us numbers is round them all off of a dollar. So every single number in there could be off by as much as at least a dollar. Certain things we look at a lot, certain things we don't look at near as much. It is a risk-based approach, we don't look at every dollar or transaction. But that overall, based on our audit, we have what we believe to be sufficient audit evidence to support our opinion. Great question, though. So, I also have a separate attached letter, that again, in the interest of not wanting to put anyone to sleep, I will not read through all the letterplate language that is in it. Under our professional standards, which are primarily put out by the ACPA and by the federal government, there are a number of things that we have to communicate to you. Fortunately, all the big scary things that we would be required to report, like fraud, if we had found major problems with accounting records, if there were things that were missing, if we had had disagreements with management, well, any number of a host of issues. If we had found them or had those issues, we would be required to report them to you here. I'm happy to report, though, that we had none of those things, and so, this left on the second page. Something that gets asked about a lot, it was new to this letter a few years ago, but it's not a new audit concept, is this section about significant risks. Significant risks are what we start the audit with sight unseen before we have done any work. When we're talking about these significant risks, that is not anything that Richwood did wrong or didn't do that they were supposed to. In fact, that first one, management override of internal control, is a assumed pervasive risk of any entity anywhere. The city of Richwood, the city of Dallas, Amazon, their auditors all have to consider the possibility of what if management had the ability to circumvent internal controls. Again, we're not saying that we found any issues there, but it is something that we have to consider. That second one, compensated expenses, is a new accounting standard that was this year. The powers that be took the rules for estimating future liabilities from early leave time, and they made it a lot more complicated. And so, that's simply showing the risk that a new accounting standard for this new complicated measurement, that it's done once a year, that there are some inherent risks associated with that. But again, we did not have any specific issues there. So, the final, and I forgive you if you felt like it was the most important document, the annual financial report.
Want me all to start out?
I'm sorry.
Want me all to open first?
There's a method to my madness, I promise. If you'll open with me to page one. I can respect that, though, everybody's eager to get to the numbers, and I am almost there. Page one is the final of our auditor's reports that I mentioned. This is our opinion over the financial statements. Again, it simply states in some fairly technical language that the city's management is responsible for producing accurate financial statements and for preparing this document, my responsibility is to audit it. And in that second paragraph, we're rendering that unmodified opinion. It goes further in the report through some parts of this report that are less than audited, because that's what GAAP requires, but that the financial statements and the notes to the financial statements are based under our audit opinion. So, with all of that, we get to the good stuff. Open with me to pages thirteen and fourteen. What we're passing over is the Management's Discussion and Analysis, which is, I like to think of it as the Cliff Notes version of the audit. It's some fairly standard language, but it does have some year-over-year analysis of why certain things changed between this year and last year. And then we also, I jumped over what we call the citywide financial statements, which really is kind of, I would say, is one of the driving differences between the numbers that you budget for and you are used to seeing throughout the year with regular financial statements versus this document. The citywide financial statements, there's no funds, they roll everything all up into one column. And there's no short-term focus, everything is in there. The TMRS pension liability, the post-employment benefits liability, all of your long-term debt, all of those different items that are related to what the city owns or what the city owes, is in that statement. And behind these financials, the notes to the financials go into painstaking detail about a great deep number of those topics. And a lot of it is really stuff that you only see once a year at the audit time, because it's only practical to present it once a year. For example, all of your pension and OPEB liabilities, the actuary gives us one study per year. And that it really is impractical to ever try and measure that more than once a year. So that's why this is the only place you'll ever see it, is in this document. But here on thirteen and fourteen, we have a balance sheet for your governmental funds. Your general fund and your transportation fund are presented there separately. And then, all of your other governmental funds are rolled up into one column. You can see that left side halfway down page thirteen, just over 2.8 million of unassigned fund balance in the general fund. That's a great sounding number, but what does it mean? We'll flip a couple pages back to sixteen and seventeen. The most basic analysis, and kind of where we start with analyzing the financial position, is simply taking that number and dividing it into expenditures. Obviously, there are a number of confounding factors. For example, the general fund's 5.4 million of expenditures include a lot of grant-funded items that aren't going to continue recurring. So there are a lot of asterisks and caveats to doing that simple math. But if we take that 2.8 million of fund balance, divide it into the 5.4 of general fund expenditures, we're sitting between five and six months in the general funded. And it is an increase, almost half a million from last year, but not a huge jump, same kind of within the range of what we've been seeing in the last few years. Oh, the other thing that I wanted to point out, that blank column for the debt service fund that's right next to it, it didn't go away, it just went further back in the report. They give us dollar thresholds for which funds we keep up front and opine on separately. But the debt service fund was well below the dollar threshold for being presented on its own. But they gave us this new standard last year, that we still have to show that it was up front last year, but that there's no activity because we presented it further back in the combining financials. I was confused quite a lot too when they first showed me this, and I was like, I have to do this? Couple pages further back, and as I close and open it up for any questions, pages nineteen and twenty are your water sewer funded. This is, or actually, all of the water sewer funds, both the operating and the capital and interested sinking piece roll up into one fund. And so, again, you can see bottom of page nineteen on the balance sheet to the left side, about eight hundred thousand in unrestricted net position. And over on the right side, you can see the increase there in the water sewer funded. And the last thing I wanted to point out is third number from the bottom on the right side, page twenty, negative seventeen thousand dollars for chains up. That essentially, we took the new rules for estimating future employee leave time that's been earned now but taken later. That's the number that we came up with that's related to water sewer. Essentially, that's the cumulative difference between how it was done in the past and how the new standard said to have done it last year, or says to calculate it at the beginning of the year. So that shows up in several places, but ultimately, again, that's not a number you're going to have to pay, and that's simply the difference between how it was being done and how it is now. And again, not a super huge liability, not a big part of contention for the audit. So I know there's another forty pages behind this document that we haven't gone over. And again, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, or go over any topic in here. But in the interest of time, that's all I was going to go over. And I'd be happy to open it up to any questions that you might have at this point.
So in general, what's positive for you?
This.
Thank you.
It's a weird word to use for that.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Chris.
Thanks. Good job, Clayton, Misty.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, please?
If any of you have people that have questions, I can try to answer them during the week or whatever, and if I can't, they're always available to me.
We appreciate your presentation.
And this will go on our website.
Yes.
They will email me a digital one. As soon as we get it, we'll get it.
Yep.
We have to drive back to Houston.
Oh, I'm very seldom, actually.
That's why he's at the very beginning of the agenda.
Right in. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Good job.
You be safe. All right, we move on to, okay, budget report, December twenty twenty five, and C approval minimum for regular meeting held January twelve twenty twenty six.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Moving on to discussion and action items, A. Can y'all write these any longer?
It's, yeah, I'm sorry. Just for daddy.
Hey. Discussion and consideration of ordinance number twenty-six dash five thirty-seven, amending chapter twelve, section twelve, dash two-three-two of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Richwood, relating to liens for work of or improvements to update statutory references, verify lien filing, and enforcement procedure, and ensure consistency with current state law and administrative practices.
So this was something that we figured out, working through some release of liens, filing fees of the county charging us. We do charge the cost of the lien, but we do not have any way, so we're losing money by paying filing fees for the county clerk's office. Law allows us to establish a way to recoup that, but it has to be in our purposes, so this is kind of just a cleanup ordinance to get that done. What sort of liens are we? When we mow grass. So we put a lien on the property, then we file it with the county, so it follows the property. That costs us money to go file, and then to be able, so right now, we invoice for the cost of the labor to cut the grass, for instance. Now, when we invoice, we will also add in the cost of filing and the cost of filing the release of lien into the invoice that we usually provide it to the tax office when we try to sell a property or the title company. That's what happened, right, how we figured this out?
We just had, I think, a packet of ten or twelve released at one time, and we had to pay like twenty-eight hundred dollars.
On one property.
Oh, wow, okay.
Is it fee, a flat fee, or is it put in on the property and the lien?
That I don't know.
I, yeah.
By the, based on a type of filing?
See, it's a flat fee to release. I don't off the top of my head how much, I just got that packet in.
I know we have to end it.
So, we just want to break even. We don't want these liens to end up costing the city money. They need to be the expense of the property.
I would just, you could just, motion to adopt ordinance twenty-six thirty-five. Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-six five thirty-seven, amending chapter twelve-
for all associated fees to the applicant, and make related clarifying and housekeeping amendments.
So this is just another one we found, just working through a replat. Our current ordinance says that somebody filing for a replat has to bring me five giant copies of My, like, not MyLARS, printed paper of the plans, so that the plan reviewer can, so this is cleanup, it's removing the need to print lots of paperwork, it's all filed electronically, they can bring a junk driver, email it. That's the main change for it. We already addressed the associated fees to the applicant with the filing, because our fees schedule already. It's just cleaning up the ordinance related to replats.
For how they submit.
For how they submit. So all that's required to actually physically be submitted is tax certificates and, you know.
What if they choose to still do the paper? They could do either work, or?
No, I have no way to scan in those giant plans to send to our. We don't have anyone actually try and submit it nowadays. I have never had anybody bring them to me. I was just working on a replat with someone, and they were wanting to clarify that I needed five copies, and I was, no, no, I don't, I don't want five copies.
So just cleanup, how we do. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 26538, amending chapter 32. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Vote in the future, ma'am. No items removed and consented agenda. Next, we capital improvements projects update.
Sorry, I can assist you, please.
Where'd you go?
He's here.
Yeah, I was supposed to text him when I was talking.
Well, how do y'all like the weather? Do you like it warmer like this week, or colder like last week?
Warm. Warm. I had a baseball practice on this week, and it was, um.
I heard a lot of people saying they liked it cold, lasts for, what, 24 hours?
Weather here, I would say that.
I love it warm.
When is the right time? I don't. Only if it's warm enough. Okay. There he is.
Sorry, that was my fault.
There's a part of it.
All right. Great. I'll let you order.
Okay, sorry. Only thing new at CIP is the pre-con meeting we have at CBD, CBD. Hopefully, it'll start within the next two weeks, and delivered, and we'll be reviewing those, and, uh, let them look counsel soon as we can. And that's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Cliff.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Cliff, you have some, you think, yardarms start flushing again pretty soon due to the temperatures?
Yes.
It was nice, but the rain diluted all that.
Yeah, yes.
But that is good news for the future. Okay, next is council members, Commissar Court, Stalberg, do you have anything to add?
Yep. Two years. As y'all know, we've had a couple things happen within the past week, and I've got a little statement that I wrote here this morning when I woke up drinking my coffee and honey that I'd like to read. Take it how you will, take it how you want. If you have any questions of me, ever, pull me off to the side, because I'm not gonna, I might not tell you what you like, but I'll tell you what I know. So good evening, all. I've come to you and hope to shed some light on what has occurred in the past week in my, our city. We have a tyrannical, overreaching city management that has displayed not only how much of a liar he is, but he can actually continue to have people believe him, just baffles me. There's no truth into most of what he claims, and with that being said, himself, he has caught the man's job and his livelihood. This does not belong in the city, and he's fooled a lot of people. Those people continue to let him get away with whatever he pleases, whether it be a raise, replacing all of the decision-making in the two previous of at least six cities that I know about, that he worked for for a short period, kind of under the same circumstances. All allegations here in Richwood have been one-sided, with almost nobody wishing to hear both sides of the story. An investigation into alleged misconduct was held, where he was judged, jury, and executioner. How's that possible? Then on top of that, he was the one who handled the appeals process, which was swiftly denied. I myself requested a FOIA from previous. Distributed all city council members, or the pattern of abuse to city employees that were showed in there. Happened there, it's happening here. This is unacceptable. And then chief was fired for cause by the city, for his employer upon my meeting with the city manager I saw directly through him. And I, I read people for a living, so I saw right through it. There are allegations made against me, which I believe were conveniently blamed on others, because he wouldn't land up to say, say he said it. He's blamed on other people, allegations that were pretty substantial. Upon his firing from previous city, he took on the role of a sworn ex-police, police chief. From what I've seen, he hadn't amounted to anything that this man right here has amounted to, and I still call him chief of police. You're still my chief, chief. You're adored by the community, you're adored by a lot of people in the city for doing what you were doing, standing up, running the police department. Now we've got somebody running it from a civilian post, stand aside because he didn't conform. He was threatened with disciplinary actions. Now here we are. It's quite a little community. Where I grew up, 404 South Gilbon, right over in Ridgefield, Texas. Now I call home again after almost three years in the middle of a storm, a storm that one man created here, as well as in past cities where he's worked. That's all if you take the time to think about this very short summary of what I've seen occur here in my short time. Once again, if you have, if you want my email, I will forward you any information that I have, what's called free information. Okay, I requested it. It was all over the paper. I'm not scared to hide behind anything. Okay, so if y'all want it, get with me after this, get with me whenever. So you can find out where I live.
Captain Dawson?
I do appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I have seen more people out than this at one time, but it's been a while, so appreciate the community interest, there's a lot going on, and I don't have a comment like that to make. We're gonna drive through it. Thank you.
All right. Captain Maris?
I, I go with Mike says, I, I love hot topic on the agenda, otherwise it's pretty vacant in here, so thank you all for showing up, showing interest in your city.
Okay, Captain Reagerson?
This has been on my mind for a few days, and I will say this, and take it for what it's worth, take it how you want to take it. I love seeing all y'all out here, I love seeing the community involved. That's how I started. Many of y'all have been around here for any amount of time, you know that's, I started right there behind that podium, trying to make a difference, trying to make a change. That's all I've ever done, even since I've been up here. And I think sometimes that gets misconstrued or misplaced, you know? If you ask for transparency, when we have, when we hand you what we have, no opinions attached to it, just what we have in our hands, and then get crucified for it, how do you expect us to still hand you stuff? I wished when I was out there behind that podium, I had council members that would have been in the middle of the night, woke up a city manager, had the city attorney on the phone, no, I want these documents, I want them now, I've got citizens with questions, and send it out. And then to have the barrage of things that I've gone through over the last week because of it, just trying to get all that y'all asked for. Because that is what I swore I would do. But just keep that in mind when you, when you need us to do something. I'm gonna hand you exactly what you asked for. After that, it's on you to figure out the rest.
Is that all, Mr. Yerson?
Yeah.
Thank you. Captain Fenton?
I've thought about it all week, about kind of everything that's gone on, and thought about it. I think what it boils down to is, you know, the way I look at it is, we are here as a governing body to oversee all that the taxes and the money and everything is spent the way it should be spent, there's nothing going on, and the city is running in a way to help the city as a whole. That being said, yes, there could be some times where there are personnel issues, where there are folks that do not get along with one another. But I don't think that's the board's place to jump in or to, let it get too involved. I view it similar as, like, if agreements with the board of directors saying, well, I don't agree with the manager said. So, that's the manager's responsibility to do what they feel is, they should do based upon the information they have. Those that don't agree with it, there are appeals processes, there are processes to go through that need to be followed, and I think they should do that if they feel they should do that. But I think at the same time, we need to remember where this city was probably four or five, maybe five years ago, I guess it's been, financially wise. It's, you know, we're in, it's a good position that we're in, and I hope, and a lot of folks that are in this room have helped to get it to that position. It'll always be worse, a lot of cities around us that aren't as sitting where we are, that it can get an audit report like this. I hope, I think it'll take a little time, and things will kind of even out. It's just my personal opinion, I need to, you know, it's hard, to me, it is kind of disheartening that you have to go through stuff like that, sit in front of the city council, just kind of part of the, I guess you'd say, but I look at it, it kind of is what it is. It's just kind of the way I am. If you want to make a change, this is the last week to sign up, to run for council, to be in it. I think there's great positions open. I myself, I will say, I am not ready for reelection, not because of anything, I have my own personal reasons, so I will not be doing it. I have a lot going on in my life, so maybe it's tough trying to put everything you want to put into this and still do other things, so it's just, it's just in my, stay involved with it, and see what, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton. I thought we were going to get to a point where we could pack to be turned in. If you wish for your voices to be heard, there's three spots open on council. We would like to see everybody that wants to be here, that wants to do good for the city up here. It's not as bad as you think it is. You do it once in a while.
It's not.
Sometimes, a little bit longer, we have great staff, we get great audit reports. But at the end of the day, I want to see Richwood continue to go forward in the right way. We have the great, probably the greatest residents of the board of council. Don't tell anybody that, so. Remember, till the thirteenth, come out and join us. Do we have an applicant for every position yet?
We have no applicant.
So? Your voice will never be heard. Sign up. We need you. You are the people, you are the voice of Richwood. And thank you all for coming, better than I thought it was gonna be. Okay, next is items of community interest.
So they stole my thunder on that. We have council packets available until Friday, 5:00 PM, for filing, can have to be filed, signed, sworn by 5:00 PM or I can not accept. If there's an error on the form after swearing, and I don't have time to catch it before 5:00 PM, we do not accept it. So I know a lot of people want to wait till last minute to see who's running. Fire Department has a new Facebook page, they're doing a push to get some people out. They meet every Thursday at 7:00 PM, the fire station down the street. So if you're ever interested in serving your community in that way, they need help, or they love for people to come out and see what they do. KRB is still in need of people, down to three people on this board, we're struggling to come up with projects that they can do effectively and that, use your money wisely. Most of you contribute underwater bills to help KRB keep the city pretty and do cleanups and everything that they do around the area, but we're, we're low on help. So if anyone, even if it's just to come out and you can't serve it, she's the executive director, she's awesome to work with, she'll reach out and give you any information you might need. That's all I have. Spring cleanup's coming, I will have information soon.
Right, pins are definitely out.
They're in, they're still in. Fire Department's also having a movie night, or movie day, is it during the day? Movie night. Movie night before Easter, but that information's gonna come out sooner, it's later in March, and we'll be putting that out also. A lot of foul air base, because it reminded me.
Hey, have any future identity items at his time?
Can the public have you put on that, on that one?
Well, we need to.
I need to send that to all five plus you.
You can send it to me. Can we hear it? Yeah. Anybody else want a future identity item? Make sure to email.
We have Grant. Grant's probably carrying.
We do.
They're called Jayberg Grant.
We do. That's all?
I don't know who they're talking to here.
I got a month, thank you. Give it up to sort of spots. All right, before we go, March 1st is a big day, so I want to wish my son a happy early birthday. That said, time is now 6:50, and this meeting is adjourned.